We'll call the meaning to order of November 21st, 2011, and start with a moment of silent meditation and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to citizen licensing board?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Liquor license renewals. There are a couple items here continued from November 7th. The first one is Class A, Hopkinton Liquor Depot. Marie Lynn, excuse me, I put it backwards. Lynn Marie Finn is here?
My daughter.
Okay. Your daughter? Okay. And your first name?
Larissa.
Larissa. Okay. Were there any questions on this one from the council?
No.
No? Anyone from the public wish to be heard? Nope. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the renewal of the liquor license for Hopkinton Liquor Depot, Hopkinton, Inc.
A motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
You too. Happy Thanksgiving.
Next one up, Village Place, Edwin Russell. How are you tonight?
Good.
It's been awhile. Does anyone have any questions? Anyone from the public wish to be heard? Ron.
I'd make a motion to allow the renewal of the liquor license for Village Place LLC in Hopkali.
Okay, motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hope it's a good year for you.
Thanks.
Good seeing you again, Kennedy.
Motion to adjourn as licensing board reconvenes council.
Before we do that, okay, I wanted to make sure, okay. You're fine. I wanted to make sure we didn't have to do, oh, anyway.
We don't have to have a motion about all taxes paid and all that stuff. Do we have to do that mechanically?
That was done as part, actually, that wasn't made, that wasn't part of-
I didn't make it as part of that motion. I'll make a motion to grant the renewal of Hopkinton Liquor Depot and Village Place, subject to all state and town regulations being met in all town taxes current prior to use.
Second. Thank you, Scott.
Okay, let us break it up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn as licensing board reconvenes council.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda. Is there anything to be removed before we approve it?
Oh. Okay. We make a motion to set January 3rd, 2012, as the first town council meeting in January due to New Year's holiday. Set January 3rd, 2012, as the hearing date for renewal of campground licenses. Set January 17th, 2012, as the second town council meeting in January due to Martin Luther King Day holiday. Set January 17th, 2012, as the hearing date for renewal of commercial haulers licenses and to accept the following report to Town Clerk, Tax Assessor, which includes abatement and supplement tax collector, which includes adjustments if these come in.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to accept the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Our first public forum. Would you like to speak?
Ronnie Kennedy, 238 Main Street, Ashaway. I couldn't make it to the hearing on J.J. Marone's property, but that property, the house, was formerly Florence's Tea Room. She had banquets there, 45 to 50 people. And then she had a soda jerk where we could go in after sliding and whatnot, skating, and have ice cream, hot chocolate, or whatever. That property's always been business. I know there's three lots, and it seems to me that somehow or other, that could be configured to allow for the traffic. I see traffic going into the other donut shop, unbelievable amount of traffic. I don't think that Best Eaten would generate that type of traffic that Dunkin' Donuts does, but I'm only saying that. I don't know for certain. But there was other businesses along that street. Henry Crosby had a Tea Room, the house before you turn up Maxon Hill Road. Ashaway was a thriving little community 65 years ago when I was a boy. In the village of Ashaway, you could get your shoes repaired, get your hair cut. You'd go to the Ashaway National Bank, go to Johnny Ping Pong Store. Want to shoot a game of pool? Could shoot a game of pool. You want some fresh fish? Irvin Rexroth had a fish market. Right next to the barber shop, there was a little store where you could go in and, I'm not a coffee or tea drinker, but if you wanted coffee or tea, or sandwich, or ice cream, there was a shop there. And that was operated by a local fellow. The post office used to be in that immediate area. You went across the bridge, there was Pete Turnbull's store. So there was a lot of business in the village of Ashaway. Down at Maxon Street, there was John Kenyon. Across the street was a body fender shop. We don't have anything in Ashaway anymore. Seems to me that this council ought to be looking to generate some tax dollars. Don't educate children out of a donut shop. And maybe that's not the best use for that property, but let's find something that would be useful there. That building has been unoccupied for a number of years. J.J.'s father lived to be almost 100 years old and lived in that house. There's business across the street, the Brick Oven. I belonged to the fire department for 60 years. I've never seen a traffic tie-up on Route 3 where we couldn't get fire trucks out. When Florence Marone rang that as a Tea Room, there were cars lining both sides of Route 3. Of course, there weren't as many cars on the road as there are today, but nonetheless, it didn't hold that little Ford, Model A Ford from the fire department from getting through. So I think that we have to loosen up a little bit. I don't think, say, that we have to have something like, excuse me, Warwick, but we need something. We don't have anything in this town. I remember living on Knight Street in Ashaway. My mother would send me to Pete Turnbull's store for a loaf of bread. I'd have a hell of a walk to get a loaf of bread today. But it's just time that we loosened up a little bit and brought something into the village. We need something very badly. Thank you.
Ron, I wanted to ask you, the Ashaway National Bank, where was that?
What's that now?
Where was the Ashaway National Bank?
Ashaway National Bank? Where the Etna Engineering property used to be, there was a large building there. And on the, as you looked at the building on the left, would be the Ashaway National Bank. Then was Johnny Ping Pong Store. And then upstairs were the pool room. So it was a big building, and it was just torn down because Etna needed more parking. And of course, Etna is gone now, and Joe Vanderbosch owns all that property down through there now. But it was a nice little community. I'm talking when I was 12 or 13 years old, but it still could be the same. And we need something.
Thank you.
We're pointing out that Peter Turnbull's great-granddaughter, Representative Hopkinton Liquor Depot, Larissa Harrison, Pete Turnbull's wife, was my mother's first cousin, so.
Twice removed. Twice removed.
No, I mean.
Nope.
Her grandmother's my second cousin.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at the public forum? All right, next up, Town Manager's Report.
Thank you. Just briefly, early November, I prepared some documentation in support of the town's proposed energy upgrades that are reimbursable under a $51,000 grant from Rhode Island Office of Energy Resources. We established a committee that included Laura Kenyon, Brad Ward, Lisa Cook-Martin, Jim Lampier, Jim Hurley, and myself. The committee has met twice and in the process of identifying and obtaining cost estimates for the qualifying projects. The deadline date for submission of this grant is September 13th of next year. On November 14th, we met again for the third time at the Thayer House to discuss how we plan to pursue the purchase and installation of equipment. And right now, we're looking at two furnaces and garage doors for DPW, a new split unit for the clerk's office, and more efficient outside lighting in several town buildings. And hopefully, we'll be able to utilize contractors or agencies that are on the master price agreement or will go out to bid for the services and equipment. It's a work in progress, but it's going very smoothly. And lastly, November 3rd of this year, Councilors Frank Lindofy, Barbara Capalbo, and Scott Bill Hurst, along with Jim Lampier and myself, met with Executive Director Keith Stokes and Assistant Director Bill Possins of the Rhode Island Department of Economic Development at Town Hall. After a brief discussion, we then toured High Tech Corporation headquarters and were graciously led on a tour of that facility by Ray Quinlan to show the people at EDC the type of light manufacturing businesses the town has pursued and wishes to continue to bring into town in the years ahead. That about wraps it up. Thank you.
Counsel, have any questions for the manager? Okay. Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Under new business, we have a request to consider a waiver, the impact fees for the Rockville Mill project. Jeff, would you like to come up? Or you're designee?
I'm not yet. My name's Bill Gordon, and I work with the Rockville Mill LLC. I'm their development consultant. I've been helping them on the project for several years. And they asked that I speak on their behalf for this request. We did prepare a memo for you. Has everyone on the council seen the memo? Okay. I think I should start out by immediately telling you that there was a, the calculation was incorrect on what the waiver request is for, and it's for $15,337.50, not the $21,472.
Can I have that number again?
The number is $15,337.50. The efficiencies in one bedrooms are exempt from the tax, and we had mistakenly calculated them in to the unit calculation, so I apologize for that mistake. But at least the request went down, so that should make it a little more palatable. I mean, the intent of the memo was to really capture the salient points of why we are in the position of needing to ask you for this waiver. I could review it if that would be useful.
For the record, yes.
Okay. Well, the Rockville Mill is 14 units of affordable housing, and although I haven't appeared before you, I'm sure that you are aware of the project and aware of all the years that went into developing it and working on it. It's financed basically by local, state, and federal sources of financing because it's affordable housing. It's doing well. We're under construction. We're about 50, a little less than 50% complete right now. And, you know, we're looking at later in the spring of it being completed, or early summer. Along the way, we did have to pay the town the fire permit fee, which we paid, and a building permit fee, which the memo captures. And we did have to go through a comp permit process, which was a long and involved process, and we did receive the comp permit from the town approval. And at that time, we actually asked for a waiver of that fee. We wanted this to have full disclosure of everything that we did pay and then what the town has already actually waived. And that fee was waived, the comp permit fee was waived. We were not aware of, or didn't know about, within our budget, the school impact fee. When we showed up to get our building permit, we were told that we needed to pay it. At that moment, we were trying to start construction. There were a lot of moving parts, and the town agreed to let us proceed and issue the building permit because ultimately, we can't get a CO. Once the construction's completed, we can't get a certificate of occupancy. The town has to issue that, so if this fee was outstanding, that would be a basis of not issuing the CO. So the town had felt at the time that they had plenty of leverage to get the fee if need be, and we at the time said we thought we would want to come in and ask for this waiver that now we're before you requesting. Along the way, we, and again, the sort of the latter part of the memo is trying to discuss that, we've, as it turned out, have needed to use a lot of our, if not all of our contingency, which is a construction contingency, on additional costs to the project. And that's what the contingency's for, so it's being used for why it is in the budget. And a lot of the contingency, or the majority of it, has come about because of the fire district requirements, additional requirements they made to our plans. Our plans were approved, and so we thought it was covered. The contractor had the improvements related to fire. Specifically, it has to do with a water retention plan that we have, where we have to retain water in big underground tanks. We have to have a proper pump. We have to be able to fight a fire if one were to occur, not depending on the water system. We have to have our own sort of internal water system. We had a system that was approved, and that, again, that's what the contractor based their numbers on. And then, this isn't unusual. This does happen. But of course, from the developer, it's unwelcome news, but then the fire district and other communities, the fire marshal come in and ask for additional amendments to plans that have already been approved. And the second page of this is just accurately trying to document every improvement. We're not whining about it or complaining about it. We're just stating, sort of just trying to share with you the facts of what happened. And it totaled $77,000 of additional costs. We raised it partly because clearly it's in the town's interest that we have a building that has a good fire suppression system and has the backup water system, et cetera. So we're trying to work with the town, and, or the fire district in this case, I know there's a difference, in, you know, doing it right in terms of the construction of the building. Also, this has nothing to do with the town. We're just sharing the information. The National Grid surprised us with a fee that wasn't anticipated. So that added another, what was their fee? That added another $12,000. So we ended up with $90,000 of unanticipated costs directly kind of related to the building, which basically uses most of the contingency. We're at almost 50% completion. We have a few thousand dollars left in the contingency, and it would be a mistake. I mean, we, the contingency really should be going to the building. That's what the construction contingency's for. So we actually don't really have the resources to pay this. It's a very weak bargaining position to show up at, you know, saying we don't have it. So we are kind of at your, a little bit at your mercy, asking, in fact, if we could waive the school impact fee, understanding that it's a tight budget and that it's affordable housing and it's benefiting the community, and that we have been putting the resource, the extra little resources we do have into the, in the project. We have been putting it into the building whenever requested. I just want to make sure I covered everything that feels important here. The town has been supportive. We recognize that. We've received funds from the town through the CDBG program. And again, of course, we've received the comp permit, so we're not coming to you also without the idea that the town hasn't been supportive. You have, and from our perspective, it's a great project, but we need your, we're asking for your assistance on waiving the school impact fee.
Want to start it then?
You know, he wrote some stuff down. I have a few. You want me to start?
Yes, go ahead, Scott. Okay, we're way around.
You know that, of course, the fire district, you paid those fees probably to the whole Valley, Wyoming Fire District, or the association. Yeah, it wasn't to the town.
No, I understand they don't go from, I, you're right. I understand it doesn't go to the town.
The thing, also, when you have a waiver on school impact fees, that's because of, obviously, I think the only purpose we use impact fees for in Hopkien is education, and...
I'm sorry.
Impact fees, as far as I understand, are only used for educational purposes. We don't designate our impact fees for any other purpose.
I believe that's correct.
The thing is, could you tell me what the estimated number of children of school age would, is estimated to come out of that project?
It occurred to me that you'd ask that question, and of course, I didn't bring the piece of paper that we have, that from a, at one point in the comp permit process, we had an impact statement had to be conducted. So I can't answer that off the top of my head. We have, we have to leave the one bedrooms out. We have six two-bedrooms and four three-bedrooms that are kind of generating the impact fee. And I do remember when the impact study was done, there was a range of what they anticipated. You could come up with a worst-case scenario and a best-case scenario, obviously. You could say the two bedrooms would only have one child, but if they're same sex and they're between the ages of five and 18, then you could actually have two children in a worst-case scenario in each two-bedroom. So if there are four of them, that could be, you know, actually, you know, there were six, so that could be 12. That won't happen. I mean, statistically, that's not what the impact study would say, but that would be the, could potentially be a worst-case scenario. And then the three-bedroom, you could theoretically have four kids. That isn't how they look at it. I think they kind of come up with an average, and they probably would say this building would average about two. If you have the three bedrooms and the two bedrooms, they'd say it'd be about two per unit, is I think what they kind of compromised on the studies, because you can't assume the absolute worst, and you're not going to assume just, you know, in the three bedrooms, you might have three children living in a three-bedroom. It'd be unlikely to have four.
I have two more questions.
So that wasn't a sign, again, I apologize if I don't have the study in front of me, which gave an exact number, but I'd say about two per unit.
I'd like to ask Jeff, if he would, Mr. Marshawn, or maybe you can answer the question. Is it, is it the normal practice that when we have projects like this, the Rockville Mills, do cities and towns normally waiver their impact fees? Is that a normal practice?
Well, why don't we, that was something that needs to come out tonight. Lisa, I think our clerk could certainly comment on this town, and I know in the past, just from reading the newspaper, that councils have waived these fees for affordable housing. So do you have any?
I really don't have anything else to add to that because this is the first one that's come to the council.
For this one?
For any of them. I don't believe there's been any.
Weren't there some, when Bev Kenny was president?
That's right. There was one. I'm somewhat... There was one because there was an extreme circumstance on Main Street in Hope Valley where there was a, an unfortunate circumstance and where a gentleman who worked at Home Depot, they donated materials for this project to help remaining family members left behind. And I believe the town waived building fees. I'm not sure if I can.
I meant, I meant any particular, I wouldn't mean just this fee. I meant anything.
It's only a non-renewal.
Impact fees, I believe it is.
I can.
I mean, this is not the new construction. It's renovation.
Well, it's renovation.
Got rehab.
It's too big to be renovation. The scale of it becomes new construction.
And they owe 50% of the escot.
New construction. Okay.
Can Jeff respond to that?
Well, so we'll kick it back to you folks now.
Well, I can, I mean, there's two answers, and then if Jeff wants to chime in, feel free. I've been working with groups doing affordable housing for, I think, 23 years, and actually, I've never been on a project that's paid an impact, a school impact fee before, but which doesn't mean that it's not a valid fee. It's just my experience is I haven't paid one on one of my projects yet. But often, for affordable housing, in particular when you go through a comp permit process, one of the ways that the community will support it is they do waive different impact fees. I mean, that's one of the ways that they will be able to, when they list the different ways that they can help with affordable housing become realized in their, in their housing plans, they often will say, well, it's at the town's discretion to waive a building permit or impact fees or et cetera. And they often waive some of them. I mean, not necessarily all of them, but often there's some waiver that happens to some of the impact fees.
Okay, I got one more question. The success of the Rockville Mill project is very much tied in with the Rockville Post Office, and has, has your group decided what strategy you will have if you lose the revenue if the Rockville Post Office were closed? Because that, because that's obviously going to have a finance, financial impact on the Rockville Mill and its future.
Yeah, no, we're, we don't want to lose them as a tenant. They're important. You know, they do provide, I mean, it's rental income to help carry the debt and help operate the building. We would have to find another suitable tenant, which would be a challenge. We are working with Rhode Island Housing, and they're actually, because they have a lot of money in the project, they're actually advocating hard with Senator Reed's office and in DC for the post office to stay. I mean, they're, they're working on it along with us, but I mean, there's no, but I don't have an answer for you. We identified an alternative tenant, you know, still under lease now. We have several years left. I think they have a five-year lease. I don't know where we are in the five years, but we're several years left in it, but...
I thought it was a relevant question, a very important question, because that provides income to your project.
Yes.
I have no further questions, Madam President.
Tom?
Okay, the only, to go back to Scott's, I figured it out to be around 14 kids.
Yeah, you know what? It's funny, I took some notes, and I came up with 14.
Okay, $15,000 a kid, that's a roughly around $210,000 increase in the school department.
And how much per kid?
$15,000.
It's not, it's $4,000 per child. It's $4,000 per child.
That's 14.
Yeah, times four.
You said four.
No, it's $4,000 per student.
That's 14.
It's not $15,000.
It's 14.
After you minus state aid, why you came up with the number, $4,000.
You get subs, you get something from the state.
That's why she had a different number.
Okay.
All right, I just went, I just used the number.
That's fine.
All right, so you have 14.
You've come to the same place you were.
Okay, all right, so that's, I just, that was just FYI. My only question I have is, if we waive this, do we set a precedent for future low-income housing units? You know, the state is pushing for the 10%, and just, we've still got one project that's still in CHAB, I believe. Did we get the ruling on that yet? I don't know.
No, this one's still there.
So that's still there. That's going to be coming up. That's probably larger than this one. I'm just concerned about setting a precedent. That's all. I mean, the issue, the one in Hope Valley, was a rare circumstance concerning that. The extra income, extra expenses that the project has incurred due to the fire department and the National Grid is not of our making. The town has nothing to do with that. We've already waived the comp permit, so these are just FYI. That's all.
And that was the only question. That's it.
Are we setting a precedent, is my concern.
Does anyone know, on this piece of paper where it says the town waived the comp permit application, is it the planning board or... permit application, was it the planning board or the town council? Who waived that?
The planning board.
The planning board, so it's, it's the purview of the planning board to waive, that's what I thought. Okay, so we know that the planning board had, that's, I guess that was my thinking, it wasn't necessarily the council board, because I know that the planning board has waived fees, not just for this, but other, other items, so, okay.
Barbara, I'm sort of on the same page, I think, as Tom. If it's 14 kids at 4,000, it's 56,000 a year for the children. And if it's not 14 children, and it's as many as 20 children, that's up to 80,000 per year. And if this is low income, there's a good chance they're not paying the taxes that they would need to in order for us to support these children. I am not in favor of giving you the school impact fee. It is crucial to the town. I realize you may think of it as minor, but it really isn't. We're going to be picking up an enormous amount of money for these children consistently with our taxes and with our citizens. I don't think it's fair to them. I'm glad we did the fire in the building, I don't have any problem with that, but the school impact fee, the whole purpose is to help build and create and keep the school and maintain it, because all of our impact fees go to the school, and so will all of these children. So I'm not really for that at all. I do understand your problem, but it's also, we did not create the problem or the issue, and it is the way things were planned and worked out, and I'm sorry, I'm really sorry that it came at a later date and so you'd had to use your contingency. But I think that the amount of children that we will be getting, and I think children are nice, but it's an enormous cost per year that all the citizens in my town would be carrying. So it's nice to have 21,000 to go toward the building, buildings of the school, because it actually goes for the, not just for teachers, it goes to maintain the school. And I think that's crucial, and that is what Rockville Mill should be wanting to do too, is maintain the school for the benefit of those children.
Hey, that's it? Frank, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have to echo Barbara's sentiments, but I guess the main questions I have is, I do construction loans in my work at a bank, and I just don't get it, like, if you put it out to bid, like, the electrical service to be upgraded, that's like a given, when you put that out to bid, if it's 200 amp, you, you get a bid for 200 amp, if it's 600, whatever. I just find it hard at this late stage to have, like, a $12,000 bid because the service had to be upgraded from National Grid. It just doesn't make any sense to me, and then.
Well, it wasn't a.
The other concern I have is, you know, obviously, all these cost overruns that came into, into play with the, from the fire district, that's another thing, wasn't it put out to bid with the fire districts, or weren't they asked, I guess, about what the fees would be, and then that would be incorporated in the bidding process? And maybe not, I don't know. It seems like a lot of money to be missed.
It wasn't missed by us. I think maybe you misunderstood the memo. I mean, I mean respectfully, I think maybe you misunderstood. We did, of course, continuously and consistently show our plans and specs to all the officials that needed to see it, and it was blessed by the fire district as okay and fine. And then after the building permit was issued, and we started doing work, they came and inspected and said, well, we want you to do this. And then it happened again and again. So our, and we understand it's not the town, I mean, we just were showing you the burden, the financial burden, but there's no, we're very clear on this is not your fee, and this is our problem. We were asking you to help us, but we understand that you didn't create the problem, we know that. So we did go to bid with a fire-water retention system that was vetted, they talked about how many gallons it had to be, how deep it was going to be, what the pump was going to be, and that's what the contractor bid, it was in his price, and then changes were insisted upon, and we had to change it. And as the system changed, clearly, it became more expensive, got fancier, had to be different-sized tanks, done it a different way, and that's, the result was this. And when it comes to fire, you have no choice. You have to say, you have to do it. There's no, I mean, we tried to negotiate less of an intense change to the system, this was the best we could do. So, yes, we, I feel very good about what we did on this, and that we were appropriate, and that we kind of got, frankly, you know, a big curveball, several curveballs thrown to us that hit us in the head. The, the fee from National Grid, yeah, there is a, it's, it's, we, yeah, we knew that there was a fee. I'm trying to remember what happened, because we certainly had, that was also all approved.
It says to upgrade the electrical service, and obviously.
No, we were upgrading it. There was something about.
That shouldn't be a mystery, I guess, is my quandary. I don't know why that came about since late.
The grid's equipment, they upgrade, not all.
Right. It's not.
Jeff, if you need to come up to the microphone.
And these are, like, really valid questions, but I think we've edited appropriately.
Yeah, we, you know, we had an electrical engineer, he went out and he looked over what the existing service was, the power coming into the building, and then what the building itself needed, and designed the system. Grid came in later.
After the fact.
After the fact, and said, oh, we have to change all this stuff out, you know, it's a $12,000 fee for that. Thank you very much.
And we did argue it, and said, this is, we had, this purpose of this project's X, and can you waive it? And, you know, we think our system's fine the way it is, I mean, in terms of the way we designed it, and they said, no, it's not, and you have to pay this, and some things you just can't win on. So I guess I just wanted you to be clear that the project is paying taxes, I mean, we are paying taxes. Someone said, I mean, I understand it's going to, probably paying more taxes than it pays now. Clearly, it'll be paying more taxes once it's an occupied building. So in terms of contributing to the school system, we are paying taxes. I don't know, somebody mentioned something about taxes came up. I want, so I feel like the building should be carrying its weight towards the taxes to the town. We didn't come in and ask for a tax abatement and, or what have you. And this is just a question that maybe no one's going to have an answer for, but are your, is your student population separate of this building, rising or decreasing? I was a little bit under the impression that maybe it was decreasing a little bit of late.
Well, that's, that's what I kind of wanted to talk about. I, I, we all know our community, we live in it, and right now, there, there are homeless people in our town. Right now, there are a lot of families that had to, that lost their homes and had to move back with family. So we've got doubling up, we know this. The assumption is, that I heard, was that these 14 kids are going to come into the town. We have people in town right now that need affordable housing. So will people come in from out of town? Well, sure, but how many? I don't know. But I do know there's a need in our town for affordable housing. Now, we've all had arguments, well, there is affordable housing, but, you know, so I don't, you know, I mean, we can, we could all debate that, but I don't think we need to assume that 14, or whatever the number is, they're not all going to come from outside the town, so some of them will already be in town, I just wanted to make that a point. I'm, I am in favor of waiving the fees. I think it's one of those, and I don't think it would set a precedent, I think that if you do something like that, you'd want to point out why you want to do it, what the project is, why they need the money, whether it's consistent with maybe the state law, but what we want for our own community. And this is a building that's going to go on, once it's completed, for generations. Look how long it's been there now, and once it gets renovated, it's going to go on and on and on, so that's how I feel about it.
I just have one more point. I guess what makes me a little nervous too, is you're about, what, 50% done?
A little less than 50% done, yeah. 40 something.
You're almost through all your contingency reserve? Now, what if you have another issue that comes up?
Well.
How's that going to get resolved? I'm just a little nervous about that. It would be quite.
Well, I'm glad that you're nervous about it, I mean, in a way. Well, you know, that's one of the reasons we're here, and we, you know, we tend to think you generally have, usually, it's in the first, actually, it's in the first months of a project that you uncover the issues and the problems and things that you're concerned about, typically, if you look at the curve of use of the contingency. So we're kind of thinking there shouldn't be too much, but clearly, it's a renovation, so things can come, historic renovation, things can come up. That will, that probably would become a talking to the contractor, and what can we do to change X in order to afford to do Y, and it, we will have to figure out a way of solving if it happens. I'm not staying up nights worrying about it, but I'm a little worried about it. This fire one in particular, this 77,000, I mean, that creamed us. That is the thing that creamed us. The grid hurt, but that's hurting us a lot. And I, while I'm talking, and I just take this opportunity to respond to what the council president mentioned, the idea that students are already here, I should have made that point, thank you for bringing it up. Usually, the way these go, these affordable housing developments, and I see it all the time, and I've done about 70 of them, 90% of the people who end up living in these developments are from the community where you do it. And that just, that just is what happens, and there's always a fear that people are going to come in and from outside and concerns. But generally speaking, that's who ends up living there, is people within the very community you're working, usually are the ones that fill it up. You know, they're not going to be moving from, generally speaking, from Warwick and from Cranston and from Providence. I mean, you're somewhat isolated relative to, you're not in a dense part of the state, and probably, it's going to be people within, within Hopkinton already that are going to move from where they are living, because they're going to see a beautiful new renovated apartment with affordable rents, because we have, I mean, the rents are absolutely, are subsidized by the government, so they're going to be affordable rents, and probably you'll have, most of the units will be occupied by people who already are in your school system, I mean, to the extent there are kids that are school age. So it won't be 14 new, we don't know what it will be, but it could be a couple of new ones. And that's just as, I mean, we could back that up statistically, but that, just take my word for it, that is the experience that we always have with these developments. And I think it intuitively makes sense. The people who are going to hear about this first are people in your community, and they're following it, they're aware of it, and then they start visiting it and seeing it, and they'll be on our waiting lists.
Barbara? My understanding on affordable housing is that first come, first served isn't the way it works, and it's also not first come, first served if they live in a neighborhood. I had had that question about the Sagatucket, our women's, and I was told not even 10% could be, could be put aside for Hopkinton residents, because it is according to the affordable housing standards that they have to be chosen. And you couldn't even make sure 10% were left just for Hopkinton residents. So I don't think that's the case here. I think affordable housing rules are, you have to follow their, their rules and their procedures, and I don't believe it is first come, first served, or, well, you live in the neighborhood, how wonderful, you get to be one of, you get to be one of the people we choose. I don't think that's how it works. I do agree that some of them may indeed be Hopkinton residents, and they may indeed be children already in the system, but they may not be. And the 56,000 is every year, and the 21,000 is for buildings, and the taxes you pay won't be anywhere near the costs of those children. Every year, it won't be, no matter how many taxes you pay, you will not overpower 56 to 80,000 a year just for the kids.
Of course.
You know, and it's one of those where, this is one where the school impact fee is exactly what you're trying to do, is help these people have good schools, good places to live. So this is an impact fee specifically for those children that live there, so they can have better schools, better playgrounds, better equipment, better teachers. You should be pleased and proud of it.
If, if the things that are outlined here hadn't happened, I don't think we would necessarily have been in here asking for the waiver. I mean, it's partly our circumstance of other things we had to do. I know that it's our problem, not your problem, but that is one of the reasons we're here. I can't speak to Women's Development Corp. and what they told you, but there's a thing in fair housing called local preferences, and if you disclose it and state it, you're allowed to actually have a local preference in your rent-up, and, and it's literally called a local preference. And some people do their rent-up, they do it based on first come, first served, and they announce a day that it's coming, and, you know, the first person in who meets the income criteria, as long as they meet the income levels and meet their credit and meet all the things they need to do, can actually get in. So I've done different kinds of what the management plan and the rent-up plan sometimes has a local preference. Sometimes communities will have a local preference for, you know, the people in the, in the fire and police and education, because sometimes, in really, in wealthy communities, sometimes they're, the salaries aren't enough for the very people who are working in the community or live in the community, it's just going to happen, it happens in some places. And so one of the deals is you make a local preference with the, with the city or the town. So I don't know how relevant it is to this issue for us to debate it, but I just sort of, for information purposes, there are circumstances when you can actually gear the rent-up to people, not necessarily in a neighborhood, but in the town.
Mm-hmm, sure. I think that's wonderful, if you can do that.
So.
Tom, do you have a question?
Is this a for-profit venture?
No. I mean, what, well, no one's, no one's making money in this deal, if that's what you mean.
Not yet, anyway.
No, 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 I mean, they're not.
Is it privately owned?
It is privately owned by Merrick, I have trouble with his pronouncing his last name. How do you pronounce Merrick's last name?
Zamoiski.
Zamoiski. I can tell you that, based on all the costs and the third-party costs, et cetera, that, I mean, he's, he's not making any money, he's going to, I think he's selling the building for what he paid the building for, and that's it. He's just, and maybe he's almost considering himself lucky for that because of just the circumstances.
He's selling the building?
Well, he's not selling it, I mean, he had to put the building into the project, or sell the building to the project, it's, you know, part of the structure.
Yeah, I, when I.
Wait, Tom, do you have?
I'm not completely clear with that. Does he own it, or does?
No, he owns it. Well, Rockville Mill LLC owns it.
Which is a group of investors?
Which is, no, which is the entity that was created to do this development. I mean, you have to create an entity to do the development and get all the financing, et cetera. It's called Rockville Mill LLC, and he's the principal of Rockville Mill LLC.
Okay, so say in 20 years from now, who, who gets, and all this stuff is paid off, because I know you've got a lot of money from the town and CDBG funds.
Correct.
And you've got a lot of other grants and stuff like that throughout from federal government to state government and stuff like that, and you have a base number that's left that you've put in of your own monies. Once that's paid off, who gets the rents? Where did that go?
Well, the, there are deed restrictions, because this is affordable housing, and so right now, it's for 40 years, just so you know, it's not 20, it's for 40 years, this, these deed restrictions will stay in place, that it has to be lived in by, you know, low-income people with certain incomes, et cetera. So it's a 40-year deed restriction. So if 25 years from now, Rockville Mill LLC wanted to sell the project, they would have to sell it to somebody who wanted to buy a project with all of the deed restrictions, which makes it a very unlucrative thing to buy, because that means the rents are controlled at a, at a lower level. And so the market can be skyrocketing, but the rents are the rents, and the affordability is affordability, so.
Let me ask or offer something based upon real life, what's happened in Wesleyly, what's happened in our own community, for instance, with Kanachia Cliffs. And, I mean, you wouldn't know this, but Kanachia Cliffs went through something like this when, when the first one was built, and there were problems, and, and the bottom line is, there were certain things they thought they could do, and then went, came around to, they needed a fire pond, they needed this and everything. And it was a concern, because you have a certain number of elderly up there, they need fire protection. So they ended up having to take more money out, what they thought was, everything was fine, but they had to spend more money on fire protection. So that became a problem back then. Yeah, but, but the point I was going to make, in Wesleyly and here, for instance, the affordable housing, Merchants Village, there came a time when the 30-year, 40-year, whatever the mortgage was with the government HUD, came, it was, it was going to be over, and the time had come up. And the new owners, people came in, a group came in and bought it. Now, the, what's nice about those projects is, because we were actually kind of worried, we thought, are we going to make these people move? Well, no. What happened is somebody wants to come in and they want to buy it as it is, because they have guaranteed rent. I mean, if you've got HUD, Section 8.
Yep.
If anybody knows how that works. You get paid, and the people that live there pay only 30% toward their rent, so the chances are they're not going away. Chances are they're going to be able to meet the rent. Chances are the people are going to buy this, this facility in 40 years, if it ends up being sold again, are going to want those people to stay, they're going to want Section 8. So it is lucrative, in that you know you're going to get your rent, and that's what's nice about it.
Right, and you also know that the rent will be at market rate.
Mm-hmm.
So you make a lot of money once you've paid your nut.
Well, whatever, but my, my issue with the whole thing is, do we, you know, I see it as a way to help our, our residents, so it's up to the council.
Do you think that we have enough information to make a decision? You know, a lot of intelligent observations are made, I know council, and I doubt they are about disconcerting about, you know, not even 50%, I believe, in this project and this financial issue, legitimate financial issue. Also, we have to think of president, like, I, I do not know what, what this will do when we have a similar situation coming before the council, what we've done in the past. when we have a similar situation coming before the council, what we've done in the past. And the council has an obligation for consistency. We also have to realize that we have an obligation to educate children that are in any odd places, whether it's affordable housing or regular housing, because there's a financial cost to it. But I would like to know exactly what we do in other cases so we can at least examine some level of consistency. And I don't have an answer to that.
It's really inherently. It's really inherently a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
I mean, when people come before you and they're asking for waivers like this, by definition, it's a case-by-case decision that you make because everybody who comes before you to ask for a waiver is in a different situation. So it really, I mean, precedent wouldn't help you because you've never had anybody before you in exactly this.
Situation.
Situation. So it's, it's really by its nature an individual decision, Scott.
Hearing the statement that you made, Sylvia Barber, would this council be interested in a percentage reduction instead of the whole pie?
Instead of a yes or a no?
Yep.
What I was thinking, Tom, along with that, I was thinking, sort of along that line, was do like a sliding scale, maybe? I mean, whatever the amount is, if it's 15.7 or 15.3.
15 through 3.7.
15, 3, 3.7. Can we do it over, over time, like do a third this year, a third next year? You know, I don't know, when's your anticipated finish date?
Say, late spring, early summer.
Yeah, they're going to need a certificate of occupancy, so it can't be spread out too long.
Right. No. So I mean, I think that's about our schedule, about, let's just say June, but I mean, around then. Could be May, could be July, let's say June.
Of 2012?
Yes.
Okay. Is it, is it safe to assume that maybe with the building and all that's going on and whatnot, would there, there may be any left in the construction aspect of, of the monies that are going to the project? You know, because I know sometimes, yeah, if you don't put in certain things, you might have some, some money left over. You can pay down principal, whatever. I'm just thinking.
I think that, you know, the, there's, yes, I think it's conceivable, we could come on under on a line item. It's also conceivable that there could be a few thousand dollars left in the contingency itself, and then clearly, you know, that could be available for this, but we don't know that now. But at the end of the project, we'll do a cost certification. We, we have to for some of our financing where we certify every single dollar. It's an accountant that's doing it, it's not me, third-party accountant, and we certify every single dollar that was spent. And so, yeah, we could come back and say, you know, we ended up not spending $4,000 of the contingency. Thank you. Take it.
Right.
So there is that. I don't know how we discuss it or vote on that, but they're definitely.
So that was kind of what I was thinking.
Can do something like that.
There's something maybe left over, maybe there's something we could work out and make sure it's allocated.
Well, what I was actually, through the president, what I was actually thinking of was the statement that made me stop thinking in other terms was when they said that most of the children are probably already in our community. On the low end, it'd be 14. On the high end, you said it'd be 20.
Like 20?
20, 20 kids.
Well, it's actually, it can be more than that, but 20 is kind of reasonable.
Yeah, but it also could be less than 14.
Yeah.
That's correct.
So, I mean, I actually, I think.
Wait.
Go on. Refinish. And that's why, after listening to that, and what you're telling me is, and I'm just going to go for broke here, and I'm going to make a motion that we do a 60-40 split with the, what is it?
Rockville.
Yeah, the impact fees. 60% off, 40% for the town.
Not the other way, 60-40?
I was, I'm hoping, and I'm taking these guys for their word, sometimes you just have to trust people.
What are you trusting them for? Could you let her finish, please?
For the Denver students. I know, I personally know of individuals who's, who have moved back in with their parents, and their kids are with their grandparents. So I'm hoping that that scenario will take precedent and be able to allow this family to get back into their own apartment. So this way here, the town still retains some kind of income for it, but we're also helping out these individual residents.
Did you start as a motion?
Yeah, I did.
Well, you, you, you need to shorten it down.
Yeah. The motion is, I would like, I make a motion that we split the contingent, impact fees 60-40, 60% off for the Rockville Mill, 40% payment to the town.
Okay. Is there a second?
One second.
All right, there's a second. More discussion. We started that in?
So 40% reduction, or are you saying 60, tell me?
He said 60.
60, oh, so, so we, we pay 6100 roughly?
Well, we don't pay anything, we just don't receive the revenue.
Don't get it. Right, right, right.
All right, so.
So it'd be 60% of the 15,000.
So we're fucking away about 9200.
Can we also see if.
Wait a minute. Frank, are you finished?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that was clear.
Okay. Barbara?
Can we find out from the gentleman or from Jeff Marshon if there can be indeed a local choice so that we can make sure that students, that people from our town can get X number of apartments or a percentage?
I think a lot of your decision is based on that.
I mean, it's based on that.
Exactly. Okay. Jeff, to both of you, could you, could you speak to that issue of the local preference? At this stage of the game, is it something that is feasible for you folks to put in writing?
I worked at the South Kingstown Housing Authority for a couple of years, and local preference was, was the matter, of course. It's, it's common in Section 8, and it's legal under fair housing to have a local preference. What the exact percentage is escapes me at the moment, but you can, we do, when we did the, the regional zoning project to implement the inclusionary zoning ordinance and stuff, that kind of discussion happened, and I, I know they went to HUD, fair housing people to check.
How about if we do an amendment to the, to this motion that we just made, and we make the amendment be that it also has to have include, your project has to include a written local preference.
So contingent on a, on, so your.
Can you, can you do that in writing?
I would make an amend, I'd make a, I'd like to have an amendment to the motion that we will do a 60-40 split. We will accept 40% of the fee contingent on.
If I had to do a local preference.
Contingent on a written copy of a local preference. Codicil.
I think we can, I mean, we, we want to come back to you and, I mean, we can do a local preference. I want to be clear on the timing. The, the realization of the local preference will be after issuance of a CO, and because, I mean, just the timing, we, we get a CO, now we can occupy it, and clearly we'll be marketing it before we have the CO. We'll market it months before. But you don't know exactly how it works, you don't always fully occupy it the first month, and so we can have a local preference, and then we have to fill the local preference or try to fill it. Sometimes, sometimes one can't. I don't think that's going to happen here. I think it's going to be easy for us to fulfill a local preference with local, with families whose addresses are already in Hopkinton.
Okay, well, I think, I think the intent of the, the intent here is that we want the local preference, and we don't want to tie hands, but we want our local preference.
And we don't want to wait till after the CO.
Well, the point is that whenever it be, whenever it becomes available to anyone who wants to live here, it has, you have to start with a local preference. So how, the mechanics of how that's done, I wouldn't have a, I wouldn't know. So I'm thinking that it's, it's kind of a legal thing here.
Do you think you can?
I mean, I don't know.
We can have a local preference.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And it can be written before you go to CO.
It will be written. I was just being very technical, that we can have a local preference and do everything we can to fulfill it.
And you could provide the documentation to the town.
Theoretically, of course, we'll give you the documentation.
Sure.
But theoretically, we could be going for a local preference, and in the end, this isn't going to happen. But I'm just being very technical, that we don't have enough people locally, it's a week, people aren't necessarily locally living there.
That's not, that's not where we're.
That's what I meant by saying, we still need to have a CO. But of course, we can show you our, we can do a written local preference for residents from Hopkinton.
Okay, we're going to have Lisa read back the, the original motion and the amendment to make sure we've got it down straight.
Let me go back and back.
She has a question. Counselor Buck made the motion for the 60-40 split on the impact fees, 60 of the audit for Rockville Mill, 40 of that, I'm up to the permit to the town, not seconded by Counselor first.
Okay.
And there was amendment made, but there was no second by Counselor Calvo.
Oh, sorry, I forgot that. Thank you.
For the 60-40 split, 40% was contingent upon the written copy of a local preference file from Rockville Mill.
I'll second.
Was there a second to the amendment?
Counselor Calvo's motion.
Okay.
Is that amendment sound okay?
Yeah. Okay, all right.
Frank has another question.
Yes, Frank.
What's left in the contingency?
Right now?
Yeah. You're going to have 6135.
What?
That's the 40%. Do you have the 40%?
Yes.
Well, they're going to have to work, they'll have to figure it out.
That's all I have. 6135.
Today, we have it.
Okay. I just want to make sure before we agree to something.
Well, it doesn't matter if the project fails, we get nothing anyway, so, you know. So if the project succeeds, we have 40%.
We will, we will set it aside and try and protect it. Something, if the fire marshal says you got to do X, and suddenly then we're going to have to find it somewhere else.
Yeah.
I mean, we will. That's our obligation. We owe, to get the CO, we owe the town $6,130 for a school imp, 35 for the school impact fee. And also, ahead of time, a copy of our local preference. You tell us who to give it to and all that.
Well, that's what I was just going to say, have we established who they're going to file this with?
Oh, makes sense to, that we would want it filed with the town clerk.
Okay.
We'll show you our management plan, and we, we'll, we'll show you our rent-up plan, our marketing plan, and we'll have a local preference.
Okay, so we'll just have the record note that it would be filed with the town clerk's office when you, when you do your local preference.
Okay.
Okay?
I have the amendment.
Okay. So is there any more discussion on the amendment or the motion?
Amendment first.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this issue? We've been going on and on about it, we haven't even opened it up. Okay. Is there a, a, I'll go for a vote on the amendment, the amendment to the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay. The main motion now, the 60-40 split with 60% to be waived for the project. Is there any more discussion on that? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay. We're done.
Thank you very much for listening and coming up with what I think is a win, a win-win.
Well, we, we want this to work, so, you know.
Yeah, no. It's appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you. I know you've been having a hard time. Thank you very much.
Bit of a challenge.
Thank you.
Good night. Okay. That was a good way to do that. All right, next on the agenda, authorize an advertisement for the application for the rental rehab program. Oh, look who happens to be here, Jeff Marshon. Isn't that convenient? What are we doing?
25 minutes. 8:30.
Oh, is it 8:30?
8:30, trust me.
Apparently, it's, it was handed to us when we, when we walked in, rental rehab program. That's what I was reading before we started. Would you like to take a few moments to read that, Barbara?
No, I have read it.
Actually, I didn't read it.
It's in your pocket.
Right. Exactly.
I didn't read it, Sylvia.
Okay, all right, well, then you go right ahead and read it. Start in a couple of minutes.
Okay.
My sister lives in Kansas City.
Can, uh-oh.
Does she have to do with anything?
That's who the Patriots are playing tonight.
Oh.
Do you have mixed loyalties, or are you sticking with the Patriots?
I'm sticking with the Patriots.
What about your sister?
So much family.
Oh, yeah. Kick her to the curb.
As long as they treat him like they did the Jets recently.
Well, is your sister still a Patriot, though?
No, she's full Kansas City.
She's been living there too long.
Mm-hmm. 15 years.
Ooh. Oh, sorry.
Are you leaving?
I did know you cared.
You're leaving early.
Now, we'll, now we'll do the really important stuff.
Yeah, I know, no. I don't want to miss the way I'm talking.
Happy Thanksgiving to you.
Same to you all.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Why don't we start now? You want to give us a little brief overview, overview? And I'm not, and Frank is, I don't know if he, I'm trying to remember. Oh, anyway, why don't you start with, give us a little history here for anybody who doesn't know, where we came from and how we got here? I'm sure it's probably a short history.
Back to 2004, you mean? With the new, the new act?
Well, with the Affordable Housing. You know, it started with that committee. No, not that.
Not that far back?
Really? Last year is fine.
No, no, no.
This year is fine.
Have to go back that far.
I think it was the Affordable Housing.
Committee, yeah.
Committee. Wanted, wanted to pursue.
Go back to Mr. Dubs.
Yeah, Mr. Dubs is one.
Let's go back to Mr. Dubs.
You know, there's, Mr. Dubs is hearsay to me, you'd have to ask Jim. That's hearsay to me.
Oh, okay.
I can't testify to that.
Yes, we'll start.
There's a history here, the memorandum that came through, if you want to.
Yes, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, read that. I don't know. Frank, did you see that?
No, I, I.
Oh, okay. All right.
Let's, let's say that it's believed by many that you have rental units in some parts of town that rent at rates that are considered by the state law to be affordable. What you don't have oftentimes with that is, is good quality housing, nor do you have long-term protection of that affordability. So, somebody suggested that perhaps a program of rental rehabilitation as grants could be begun in exchange for the minimum thirty-year affordability deed restrictions on some of these homes. The town would seek the money on behalf of a owner of a building with rental units. Upgrade, get rid of all the code violations, upgrade septic, whatever, heating systems, whatever it needed, get it up to snuff, and then the owner, in exchange for that, would give you thirty years of affordability and the unit would show up on your affordable inventory. So, I have done similar programs in East Greenwich. They're painful sometimes, because you have to be very careful. You have to protect yourself with nice, strong legal documents in case somebody on the other side of the equation starts to ignore the affordability. The state law requires that these things be monitored annually. So, the, my, my proposal is the town would pay to engage a monitoring agent. That's about two thousand bucks per project. And every time there's a rental turnover, that's about a five hundred dollar charge to certify the new, the new tenant. They go in and do an inspection on the unit, make sure it's still okay. The owner of the building will have to pay that going through time. But, to be in compliance, the owner has to let the monitoring agent in annually to verify that rents and income of the tenants are still in accordance with the Act. So, law has given you some, state law has given you some protection in a program like this. I didn't have any scrunch. I had owners, once they get their money, they just attack with me. So, there's more protections nowadays. So, that's the proposal. And we've done, you know, I have a scope of work somewhere in that packet, I think, how the program could operate. And what the Affordable Housing Committee did was have me do a draft ad. I sent it to them, they looked it over, they made some changes, and now you have it. No guarantee this will work. Money is very tight. I was just reading the narrow newsletter this morning. The home program is like being gutted. And that's, A, a very good source of money, or has been a very good source of money in the past for a program like this. CDBG seems to be doing a little better, but CDBG has gotten very conservative lately. But, we can only try. That's about the only two sources of money I'm aware of. There may be something in USDA, but I'd have to investigate that. But they're getting cut too.
So, perhaps we could approve the authorization of this ad to go in, but before the program starts, we wanna make sure that it passes legal muster.
I know nothing about any of this.
Right. So, I would think that anything we're gonna pursue, we would want to have legal look at it.
Yeah.
You authorize the advertisement to move forward, but make sure legal is part of the process from, from the beginning, right now, forward.
There are standard, standard deed restrictions available that could be strengthened if, if necessary. We have standard forms of promissory notes that probably should need to be strengthened in this regard.
Barbara?
I have a, I have a couple of questions. You were talking about someone that needs to go in yearly. Who is that person and who pays for them?
The, the program pays to engage the agent.
Who's the program?
We are.
The town or, or CDBG? Who is the program?
The, the, well, the town is the program.
Okay, so we would have to pay to bring someone in every time someone changed?
But that fee would be built into the project. So, the source of money for the rehab would also provide that fee money.
Okay, but that, so the person who owns the building is supplying the fee money for someone to go in and check. If someone goes in and check, and I think it's a good idea, I'm not disagreeing with that, goes in and the tenant has caused damage to the building that has been renovated and we've paid for the renovations through CDBG, who pays for those renovations now?
The tenant.
That's very nice, except the tenant's gone. You know, the tenant has left town.
Well, the tenant may be gone, but they're standard, I mean, rental property, you always get a damage deposit.
Right, I know, but who pays for the damages to be construct, you know, renovated to the level that you would be able to re-re.
The owner has to go through the normal legal procedures to get the money from the tenant. If he can't, the owner has to fix it.
Right, and where does the town come in? We are not liable on any level.
We're not in there anymore. We're gone. Once that, once that deal closes and the restrictions are in place, you're out of there.
Right.
That guy has to maintain his own property.
Okay, so who pays for it? So, each time that the place turns over, you said that the, who pays for the five hundred every time?
The owner.
The owner. But the owner pays this, the town does not.
Right.
Where did you say the town had to come in and pay for someone?
The town will pay to the, the, the start of the legal relationship between the owner and the monitoring agent. That's about two thousand dollars. That's how they, they make money on this. That can be part of the program cost. That would be written in to the application for the money that you would also be looking for to do the actual rehabilitation work.
So, the town would get the money.
So, if the rehab bid is eighty thousand dollars, we would ask for eighty-two. And that two thousand would pay the monitoring fee.
What do you, I'm, I'm sorry. Have you finished, Frank?
But, so that five hundred dollars for them to come in and recertify the apartment, basically, that, that, that could be an every-year event, right?
It is every year.
Okay, so, how long, so, and the owner's gonna pay for that five hundred?
Every year.
Every, every time?
Or he's out of compliance with the Act.
Okay.
And in default on your arrangement.
I looked at the draft and it seemed a little fuzzy to me, Jeff. I'm not sure. Like, up top, it said it's not gonna count towards the ten percent.
No, it is.
Because it's not deed restrictive. It says cannot.
I don't know what draft you're reading, but this program would.
And then, then the second paragraph says it does count, because it's restrictive.
There's gotta be a context issue there.
It's, it's, in the initial paragraph, it's talking about, it says, "Hopington believes that many of the rental units are rented without, but these units cannot count towards Hopington's bill because they are not subsidized." And then, in the next paragraph.
We're trying to find a way to subsidize from.
They're deed restrictive, right?
No, they're not.
There will be after rehab.
No, they're, we're trying to find ways to find the money to renovate apartments that can then become deed restricted.
Well, let's get back to, you believe there's a, there's a.
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, the only thing, like I said, Jeff, up here on, on.
Yeah, we see it at the top.
It says cannot be counted.
Mm-hmm.
Existing, existing rental units can't be counted.
Right.
They may rent cheaply, but they're not deed restricted.
Well, right, well, right.
Because they're not subsidized.
So, this program proposes to make them deed restricted through an investment of rehabilitation funds.
All right, so that's fine, okay.
How this, how this basically got, there was a couple of apartment, apartment houses that the owner didn't wanna put a lot of money into. And we, they come up with the idea of, okay, if we come up with fifty thousand dollars, redo these apartments, completely go through them, bring them all up to code, the owner doesn't pay anything. Alls he does is sign a paper that says, "The next thirty years, I'm gonna keep it at this level." At that time, once it becomes deed restricted for thirty years, then it counts, counts towards a ten percent.
But he still has to pay five hundred every year.
Yes. Yep, yep.
And the two, two thousand that we would have to pay per dwelling, I guess, would, is just a fee that the group gets?
It's a, it's a startup fee the monitoring agent charges to establish their relationship with the project.
Okay. Yeah, I was just a little confused on the, said cannot, but that's existing units.
Yeah.
So, the, so the plan is to advertise with this ad and see if anybody applies? Is that right? And then, once somebody applies, to search for funds?
Yeah, in this, in this market, we tried it last year's block grant application. We had some room, we put in a request for a hundred thousand dollars, I think it was, without an applicant. And it was turned down because it was too vague. You may never get an applicant.
Right, I get it. Right, so if the process right is what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Add receipt of applications. Once those are in, look for funds.
Yeah.
At any point in the process, this could go down the tubes.
Oh, yeah.
Applications may come in.
Oh, absolutely.
If applications come in, there may be no funds.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah.
But the hope is that it's kind of become shovel-ready.
Right.
And then, the people who have the money say, "Hey, they're ready."
Yeah.
And then they get the money.
We'll see.
That's, that's the theory.
We'll see. That's the weak link.
Do we have any, is there any discussion on what the wide variety of home repair work in exchange for acceptance of restrictions? Is there anything we can, where it becomes no longer renovation and repair, but reconstruction, where we have to stop? I mean, is that something that CDBG does that in conjunction with the person offering their home that may be in such a mess it needs to be rebuilt, not recon, not renovated? It may no longer be repair, but rebuilding?
Well, I'm anticipating.
Is that something you do in conjunction with the person asking?
I'm anticipating at a minimum, you're talking moderate rehabilitation, if not substantial rehabilitation.
Correct. I, I'm talking about the same thing, and I have no problem with that. But is there any kind of limit you set or where you know you've gone, we're really rebuilding for some landowner or homeowner, we're not repairing or renovating?
Last time I checked, HUD had a limit of seventy-six thousand dollars per unit.
Okay.
On investment with CDBG money.
But that's valid, because you can't rebuild a house for seventy-six. I'm just concerned about a homeowner applying, but you're basically renovating his whole house and the septic and the, you know, and the well.
Is that not good?
Well, I was just gonna say, does it make any difference if you're getting rental units out and they're affordable for thirty years? Do you care?
Yeah, because I, actually, I do care.
Okay.
Because, because we have plenty of affordable housing. People can buy a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar house right now.
Yeah, but you don't have low-mod housing.
They may not, but if they can't afford the one sixty-five, they shouldn't have a house. They should be able to afford what they want to buy.
This is, this is a rental program.
I, I understand.
Let's not go down that road tonight with, with affordable housing and, and the way the market is right now.
And, and with Section 8.
This is a rental program.
I know. The question we had was answered. I, no, it is rental housing and it's Section 8, but the rental prices in Westerly and in Ashway are sometimes very low. And they are way under those rates.
That's the premise. That's the premise of this whole program. They're very low anyway, but you can't count the unit. So, let's find a way to count the unit.
So, here's a way to make them count. Okay. So, are there any motions?
No, I think we should look at this further.
I was gonna suggest that you authorize the advertisement, and before the program starts, it has to pass legal muster.
The other thing I had, Jeff, that's just very simple. It allows the program to start, but it doesn't allow you to really start. It allows you to advertise, but it doesn't really start until legal looks at it, if you think you're ready to move forward.
Are you comfortable with authorizing this, what, what you're doing if you do it that way? Because you're authorizing the program, basically, in its entirety. In other words, you're saying, "Go ahead and advertise," and then it can go through without coming back here for anything, as long as it passes legal. Is that what your intentions?
No.
Oh.
Not mine.
Okay.
Well, that was, that's what I was asking, yeah.
Okay, that's, all right, well, then, you guys can discuss that.
So, anyway, I don't know what more we needed, but if you're not comfortable with it, that's okay, too.
Some of the things I was gonna ask Jeff to supply to legal would be the copy of the deed restrictions. He said you had some.
Oh, they're available, yeah.
Yeah, can you get those?
Sure.
To, so we can forward that to, to legal, that can be part of what she needs to look at.
Sure.
And any of the other stuff, maybe from West Greenwich or East Greenwich, remember?
Well, we, yeah, East Greenwich operated before the current Act, so it's, it's a stronger program now because of the Act. But I can, I can certainly provide the promissory notes we use in lending in other towns, mortgages, copies of deed restrictions, all that stuff. And, you know, we can discuss what ought to be stronger, because I'm using regular bank language. And I think if you can get more oomph out of a relationship with a private owner legally than you ought to.
I think that certainly makes me feel more comfortable if we can take a look at the things that we're signing, you're a life away for. If the legal can look at it and we can look at what the promissory notes, the mortgages, what they look like, how they protect the town, or if they don't protect it. I think that would make me feel a lot better. I don't really have a problem with the work, with what you're trying to do. I just don't see enough detail. So, I know where we stand as a town and what we're liable for, especially if there's a real problem. I'd be more comfortable if we could see that.
Hmm?
I don't think we're liable for any of that.
No, no.
Well, this is what, this is what I'm struggling with, guys, is we keep talking about the program and program and the program, but we don't have a program. What we have is an advertisement, and that's it. So, there's no, you know, there's no way for me, or you, or anybody else to understand how, how this thing's gonna be structured, how it's gonna work, who's gonna, you know, Barbara was asking about who pays for this, pays for that. We don't have anything that tells us any of that. So, and that's, I mean, maybe that's not a problem for the five of you. So, that's okay. I'm not the one making the decision, but that's what I'm sitting back there struggling, struggling with, is I, I don't want you involved in something that you really don't fully understand what it is you're getting into, because there really is no program yet.
Not yet.
It's gonna come, but it's not here yet.
Do you have anything, Jeff, in writing that I guess that would explain the processes?
I got.
That's what I think he's gonna give to Pat.
You forwarded all that stuff, right, that I sent you before? You've got it, I think. Five or six or eight months ago, we were here talking about this thing, and there was a bunch of documents, I think, provided. But I get them, I'll submit them, that's all.
Yeah, I think, I, I think that somebody missed some things. So, I think what we need to do is make sure that we've read the memo from Planner. Whoever hasn't seen that, you need to see that. And we'll come back for another council agenda.
Yeah, I mean, it's just too much.
I mean, it's a great idea.
I don't think, I don't think the Patriots play on a Monday night again this season.
What's that?
Be happy to come back, because I don't think the Patriots play again on a Monday night this season.
All right.
It's the only team playing supposedly tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if, if we can see that information, we'll be able to look at it in a little more detail to see where we have our ramifications.
And I think anything coming in needs to go to legal right, sure. Or right away also, so that she knows what's going on. Okay.
I can provide stuff to Lisa, and she could forward it.
Yeah.
Okay. Sure.
Thanks.
And Jim would provide, well, I guess, actually, Lisa, you have the documentation that we, that Jim had provided.
Yeah.
Frank, you need it. Unless you can check and see if you already have it, maybe you, apparently, you missed it. So, anyway, we'll make sure you get it. Okay. All right, that's fine.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we'll bring this back up when we're ready. All right, next on the agenda, discuss and authorize a town manager to contract with Direct Energy as a town supplier of electricity through National Grid. Bill?
Thank you. The, since the late nineteen nineties, the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns has created a program that they call the REAP program. It's the Rhode Island Energy Aggregation Program, which is relative to the bulk purchase of electricity by cities and towns in Rhode Island. It's been very successful over the last ten or fifteen years. The current REAP contract expires for all the cities and towns in Rhode Island at the end of December of this year. And the league has again solicited proposals and selected an energy provider to offer electricity under the REAP guidelines. The firm of Direct Energy has been selected under an open competitive process and has provided the vast majority of cities and towns with various price quotes. Now, although these quotes change on a daily basis, kind of like the stock market, we'll provide you with the most recent quotes for the town of Hopington effective today. And I asked Lisa to place that document in front of the council this evening. The most recent quotes for the three options, for the one-year option from December two thousand and eleven to December two thousand and twelve, it's six point three nine cents per kilowatt hour. For the two-year option from December two thousand and eleven to two thousand and thirteen, it's six point six zero per kilowatt hour. And for the three-year option from December two thousand and eleven to December two thousand and fourteen, it's six point seven one cents per kilowatt hour. kilowatt hour. In checking with some of the other communities, we've learned that the towns of Charleston, Richmond, and South Kingston, their town councils have selected the three-year option. And the staff in the town in Aragance, it has also recommended a three-year option for that town. I spoke at length with Finance Director Laura Kenyon, and we also recommend the three-year option. It's a, these are fixed prices that will last for the length of the option. And to take advantage of these packages, we need to lock in a rate by November 24th If we're, if we don't lock in a rate, basically, we're going to be simply paying a month-by-month National Grid customer fee. And the best part about this program is that, as I said earlier, these are, these are fixed rates, and they're much below what exactly we're paying now. For example, right now, we're paying 9.46 cents per kilowatt hour, and the most recent quote today is 6.58 cents, which would be a savings of 2.88 cents per kilowatt hour for the town of Hopington. So, you know, after lengthy discussions with the Finance Director, we recommend, respectfully recommend that the town allow myself to enter into a contract for a three-year option with Direct Energy for bulk energy rates.
Counsel?
Well, I think, you know, the thing that really makes sense is not only the fact that other towns are doing it pretty close to an eight-year low, and I would imagine the way power companies go, they're always looking for a rate hike every so often, and I think that we should jump on it. I mean, it could even go lower, but I think that when you're dealing with an eight-year low, or pretty near an eight-year low, it's, the pendulum's going to swing the other way. So I would think that the three-year option is what we should do.
Tom?
I'd just make a motion.
Go ahead.
I have a question.
If you want to make your motion, go ahead, and then we're going to continue on.
I'd make the motion that we go with the three-year REAP program.
Second.
All right, motion made, second. Barbara?
We're in a REAP program now, aren't we? We passed that before, so the REAP program we had from before has the nine-point something kilowatt hour.
Oh, that's what we're paying right now, yes.
Right, and that's part of the REAP program from three years ago.
Yes.
Is that correct? I mean, I think that the program is really good, and I think it is really helpful to have all the towns work together. It's nice to know that it's gone down so much. It's too bad we couldn't catch it in the last year.
But I mean, we know that.
Wait, excuse me. Barbara?
That's all.
Okay, Frank?
Yeah. Bill, you read off the per kilowatt hour rate, but not the new one? You were reading off the old per kilowatt hour when you read there.
Well.
Would we be voting on, I guess, when?
We're voting on the new rate.
The new one that you gave tonight.
Well, it's going to be whatever the rate is when we lock it in.
Well, the three-year option rate.
So it could change tomorrow.
Six, seven.
Correct.
No, no, according to the document that I passed out this evening, and we could only pass it out this evening because we got the quote today, was it's 6.58 cents per kilowatt hour under the three-year option. 6.58.
Right.
It may be different tomorrow. If we get the authority from the council to lock in, first thing we'll do tomorrow is call and get the rate.
So it's actually .058 per kilowatt? Just to make sure we're speaking.
Point zero six.
Zero six. Zero six five eight.
.0658 per kilowatt.
Kilowatt hour.
That's the new number, right?
Yes.
The three-year.
Which is the three-year option, correct.
Yeah, because that's even less than the two- and three-year option that was listed.
Right, right, and as they explained the changes?
And, Bill, grids monthly, there's no lock-in with those folks, right? You can't do a lock-in like with these folks with a three-year plan. Does grid have that?
I don't believe so. I think it's a month-by-month basis billing, yes. So there's no lock, there's no fixed rate, whatever it is that month, that's what you'd pay, and it will.
It fluctuates, obviously.
Yes.
Okay, you all set, Frank?
Yeah.
Scott, you have something else to add?
I can't remember about.
All right, well, the motion's been made in second to go with the three-year option. Is there any more discussion? Okay, I have to commend the analysis that was done here. I appreciate your report, Bill, where it's very concise, and I also appreciate the fact that the Finance Director did a thorough analysis of this. And except, prior to getting the up-to-date today's rate, there were different rates because they fluctuate. But with the, when she wrote the report, it was going to save the town about $1,300, so now it's going to save more. But the point is that, yet again, you have a department that was able to find a way to cut some costs, and it's commendable. Anyway, she did a thorough analysis, I just would like to point that out. I think we all know that from reading it, so it's appreciated.
I'm glad you mentioned that. She really did an excellent job, and what's really important is she took the time to check with the other towns to see what they were doing and whether or not their councils passed it, and did a lot of research and prepared the report. And as a result, like you said, the town was able to save a considerable amount of money over the next three years, so she's an invaluable resource to the town of Hopington, that's for sure.
She sure is. Okay, any more discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Last up, last public forum?
I would like to make one statement concerning the TOT mill fire. I have spoken to numerous fire chiefs from throughout the districts.